Okay, we'll start the meeting. Thank you for being patient. I was told I need to have better time management. Okay, we're moving to number eight. Consider adoption of a resolution approving Tamian Inu, Tamian Trail, as officially recognized trail name for the I-280 Trail. Can we, may I have a stop presentation, please?
Yes, we have Public Works staff here to make a presentation.
Hello, Council. Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works. I have with me Evelyn Moran, who's been the lead on this initiative, and she'll provide you a presentation.
Presentation, can someone load the present? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and the public. I'm Evelyn Moran, the project manager, and item eight is to discuss the I-280 trail name change. This is the agenda for tonight. We will go through the background, survey research, survey outreach, survey naming options, survey results, and the recommended action. Background. At the December 21st, 2021 city council meeting, city council directed staff to refrain from using the Junipero Serra name, research alternatives, and utilize the interim name I-280 Trail and collaborate with the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. At the May 2018, at the May 18th, 2022 Bicycle Pedestrian Commission meeting, the commission recommended that staff research potential names, develop a survey based on findings, and conduct public outreach. At the February 23rd, 2023 Bicycle Pedestrian Commission meeting, the pub, the commission endorsed the top choice selected by the public, which is the Tamian Inu, the Tamian Trail. Survey research. So staff worked in collaboration with the Tamian Nation, the Cupertino Historical Society, the Stachel Meyer Library at De Anza College, and staff also reviewed publications from the San Francisco Estuary Institute and the Cupertino Chronicle. From that research, seven options emerged. Survey outreach. So the survey was released on January 9th and closed on January 30th. Outreach for the survey consisted of an array of advertisements, which included a citywide mailer, items of interest, a Cupertino Safe Routes to School newsletter, social media, and e-notification. Featured on this slide is a sample of the postcard that was mailed citywide. So the survey naming options. The seven options that emerged within the four categories are as follows. Based on location, option one, the I-280 Trail. Based on Tamian Nation, option two, Tamian Inu. Option three, Rume Inu River Trail. Based on historical vegetation, based on historical vegetation of the West Santa Clara Valley, option four, Chaparral Trail. Option five is Punta de Roblar, Point of the Oak Grove Trail. And based on historic Cupertino, option six, El Hermoso Camino, Beautiful Path, or option seven, Cupertino Crossroads. The survey results. There were 112 responses. Option one had 15 responses. Option two had 37 responses. Option three had one response. Option four had 14 responses. Option five had four responses. Option six had eight, and option seven had 33 responses. Survey results. The top choice was option two, Tamian Inu, with 37 responses. The recommended action is to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the Tamian Inu as the officially recognized trail name. Thank you.
Yes. I was wondering if there's going to be, through the mayor, any kind of signage to provide some explanation? If we go ahead and choose this, then select it, will there be some information stationed somewhere along the trail? Because I wasn't familiar with the Tamian Nation until a couple of years ago, and most people think of the Aloni instead. So it might be a new name for people. And I was looking at their website today and learning a little bit about it. So I was wondering what the plan might be with that.
Of course. Staff is going to work with the nation, the tribal nation, to create educational signage that will be posted, that will be posted at the trailheads. We're also considering educational items for the project website.
Council members, questions?
Is there anything that you would attribute the, you know, 100 responses to instead of something greater? Because it seems like a small number of responses.
Well, staff did conduct outreach, so we did post, and we sent a citywide mailer. So we did the best possible to get as much feedback as we could, and that was, that was the result.
So my question is, yeah, I am wondering also, 112 responses are, you know, out of our 60,000 residents seem really low. And you did send a citywide mailer, especially for this?
Correct.
Okay, so that costs quite a bit.
Yes.
Okay, so just a side note, I don't think sometimes mailers or surveys work. So between this 37 and the second Cupertino Crossroads, 33? That's only four loads difference. I'm a little concerned about the survey results. There's no questions. I'm going to open up a public comments. I'm going to open up a public comments. Do we have any cards, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. So far in-house, we have one speaker card from Jennifer Griffin.
Okay, and then any on Zoom?
We have four on Zoom.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. I, I did, I did receive the card in January. I'm trying to remember if I actually did take the survey. I may have taken it later, but I, I didn't realize it closed so soon. And I don't know whether the names were chosen before. I have great respect for our history of California. I do speak Spanish. And I had proposed initially when the Junipero Serra name was showing issues. I will be frank, he is a historical figure in California, and I don't like to just erase figures in California. I'll just leave it there. But I had participated in the beginning meetings of when Apple first proposed the trail to go along the corridors. This goes back several years. We were talking about its passage from '85 along the Apple, the headquarters, Apple One, all the way out to the new Apple campus. I did work at tandem for two years in the eighties. So I'm, we were actually on Valco Parkway in buildings that are actually owned by Apple now. So I'm very, very familiar with the area. I had proposed, just initially started calling it the Steve Jobs Trail. It made complete sense to me because it, these are two buildings that occupied a great deal of his life in Cupertino. He did attend Cooper, I'm sorry, Homestead High School. Flint Center at De Anza has many, many instances of where he held meetings for Apple. I had the great, I was able to work on a NeXT computer in the time. It is a wonderful product that he had developed for Unix operating system. I consider Steve to be a native son of Cupertino, and I really would like to see something in our city named for him. I know that the Apple campus, the two, has many items, but he is foundational in our city. I knew Don, I wrote his name down here, Mr., the person that the bike bridge is named after, Don Burnett. I knew him. He actually helped us annex at the time into Cupertino, and the bike bridge was named for him. I, I don't want to fight about the name of this trail, but I do think that if, if people are willing, I think it's an appropriate measure to have this be the Steve Jobs Trail. I don't know, Steve, obviously, it goes between the two Apple campuses. I can't see anything, a greater tribute to him than to do something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And next we have Lisa Warren.
Hi, I wasn't going to speak to this, but historically, surveys have been pretty low in numbers. Should also be very worried that the numbers are very low in participation in things like housing element. Far lower than the survey. So somehow, if you have ideas how to make that better, please share them and, and what have you. And I would just like to comment too, that when I saw the term Cupertino or the name Cupertino Crossroads, we have a Cupertino Crossroads currently. It's a strip mall, basically. I don't, I don't see a name, a reason for something like a trail to be named at, with the same name as we have a retail center that's soon going to be, we don't know what. So I would just, you did what you could with what you had, and that's how it fell out. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. And that is, those are all of speaker cards we have for community hall. So we will move to Zoom. We have John Zhao, followed by Jennifer Sharon, followed by Leanna Crabtree. Welcome, John.
Good evening, City Council. This is John Zhao. I'm here speaking as the Chair of the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission, here to represent the commission, to speak on this item. Our commission unanimously recommends that the city council adopt Tamian Inu as the name of the trail. This was the choice that got the most votes in the citywide public survey. The trail, as you know about the history, was previously named after Junipero Serra. And given Junipero Serra's role in Spanish colonization of this area and the genocide of indigenous peoples, I believe that's part of, part of the reason that city council made the decision to rename the trail. Now, Tamian Inu is a name that the city received as a suggestion from the Tamian Nation, the indigenous people whose land we now live on, who have stewarded this land for centuries and millennia and continue to be unceded from their donation. So if the city of Cupertino wants to reconcile the history of colonization and honor the indigenous people of this land, this is a good choice for naming the trail. And I know there's some concern potentially about the public not understanding what the trail name means, but as, as staff has mentioned, there are plans to include education and interpretive signage to translate the name. And I think it's a really great opportunity for people who are walking, biking, and spending time on the trail to learn about the first people of this land. And it's a more, much more effective than having something like Tamian Trail because people are going to have to ask, what does Inu mean, right? So, so I think not translating it in entirety for the full name is effective. And, and of course, the, the commission, we were also discussing the small vote margin between the top two votes, the top two choices, excuse me, Tamian Inu and Cupertino Crossroads. And you, you know, our commission just discussed how Cupertino Crossroads is not really a good choice because, as mentioned before, this term has multiple meanings. There's already a plaza that's named after the Cupertino Crossroads. And also, a lot of people think of De Anza Boulevard and Stevens Creek Boulevard when they hear the term Cupertino Crossroads. So it's not really effective for wayfinding or place making, and it would just confuse the public. So for the reasons that I just mentioned, this, the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission voted unanimously to vote, recommend Tamian Inu to be adopted as the name. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Next we have Jennifer Sharon, followed by Leanna Crabtree, followed by San Ar. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor Way and City Council members. I'm going to be really brief because John Zhao, the Chair of the Bike Pedestrian Commission, said many of the things that I would have said. So I am speaking tonight only as a resident and not as a representative from the Parks and Recreation Commission. I encourage you to improve, to approve tonight the name of Tamian Inu or Tamian Trail, or the 280 Trail. Not only is that, is this the top choice of our residents, admittedly by four vote, but also it is a very appropriate name. And as John mentioned, the city Bicycle Pedestrian Commission approved it unanimously as well. Thank you for considering my input and for your work on behalf of Cupertino. Good night.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next we have Leanna Crabtree, followed by San Ar. Welcome, Leanna.
Good evening, Council and staff. I, I, I just have a question. I have no objection to the name Tamian Inu. I'm, I'm happy to hear that the city is going to move forward with naming the trail after a native people. But similar to Councilmember Moore, I was surprised to see the name Tamian Inu as an educational filling on my own part, I suppose. But I had always understood that, that this land was Aloni land and that the Bay Area, the San Francisco Bay Area in general was, was part of the Aloni people's land. And so I, I did see the survey. I didn't participate in the survey because there were, as I recall, six choices, but none of them represented the Aloni people at all. So I'm just hoping if there could be some background as to why the Tamian people are recognized, but the Aloni people are not recognized for this trail, just, just for my own education, and I hope the education of the community for others who may be confused as well. Thank you very much. I, I do appreciate that it will be named for the native people and, and an opportunity to educate people about the, about the native history of our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Leanna. Next we have San Ar. Welcome, San.
Good evening, City Council. I would like to offer comment that 100 responses in a city with a population of over 60,000 is completely inadequate and reflect the failing on the part of those conducting the survey to obtain adequate responses. Hosting a table by the library or by farmer's market or by any of the many places that the public frequents would have gotten you 100 responses in one hour. I would like to understand why none of those were used to obtain more feedback. Hosting a table by any of the many schools in Cupertino would have got you thousands of responses. I would have also liked to see the public forward for their choice of names. And I don't believe the public had input on a choice of names just on the options that were sent out by mailers. And so I would like to request the city council to not act on this item today and to send this back to staff and get a more representative selection of names and a more representative vote from the residents of Cupertino on the choice of names. I'd also like to offer up that the city use the Nextdoor polling feature to be able to poll residents for their choice of names. That is an instantaneous method to get feedback, even though that is not validated in terms of proof of residence checks. Finally, I would like to offer up that a name that has not been discussed, that I would love to see offered, is a choice of Hewlett Packard and Jobs Trail. Hewlett and Packard have long been a part of the history of Cupertino. HP has occupied the Cupertino campus, which is now the Apple Spaceship Campus, since 1969. The city of Cupertino was incorporated in 1955. So for much of the existence of the city of Cupertino, the HP campus has been a part of the history of the city of Cupertino. The Apple campus, the Infinite Loop, was started in, I believe, 1978. And Apple clearly has established itself as the home in Cupertino. When we mention the word Cupertino, people refer to it as the home of Apple. And so I believe we would do justice in honoring all three and unifying them into one name, calling it the Hewlett Packard and Jobs Trail. I'd like to make sure that we propose an alternative here and get the public input on a more broader scale and, and go forward. I urge you not to vote on this today and send this back for a more substantive feedback from the community. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And Mayor, that is our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'd like to thank all the public comments. Again, it's really great to hear from the public, and I'm always learning something. So I am going to close the public comment and close the public hearing right now and bring it back to council for discussion. Does council want to discuss first and make a motion, or make a motion and then discuss? Discuss first? Okay, Councilmember Chow.
I have a question. So this trail is, we just had a feasibility study. So how much it would be the estimated cost to complete it? Do we have some idea?
I don't think that's on the agenda.
But it's relevant because I have thought, I think when we decided that we probably should look at the name, one thing that I have always had, unfortunately, this hasn't been brought to the council on a study session to address is this trail, I think it will be, it will cost $50 million and more. And if we make that a really nice paved bike trail, that's going to be even more. So I have wondered, since it connects two Apple campuses, could we possibly get some donation from Apple or anyone?
Councilmember Chow, I think that the question before council is whether to rename the trail today.
So I mean, could then the donor have decide the naming? Is that relevant?
No, it's, it's not up to the donor, I'm sorry, through the mayor. So the action before council is to whether or not council would consider the recommendation of naming the trail only.
So I mean, if we want to consider that, we can postpone. I mean, we can continue the item and then seek potential donors?
Yeah, if, if you'd like to propose continuing this item to seek a donor to rename the trail, that is certainly within the scope of what's agendized.
Yeah, so that's within the scope, right?
Correct.
To consider, propose to have a donor?
Yes.
And because I am, I think it, I like Tamian, Tamian Trail, the name. I think we should recognize this Indian tribe, especially since it's not as well-known that they actually have a history in our area. We could name them after, we can rename a park as the Tamian Park, for example. But for this trail, we really need a funding source. So if we can consider a donor for the trail, that's a really good opportunity. And maybe we can name the Lawrence Smithy Park Tamian Park, for example. Yeah, thank you.
And then Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to thank Chad and Evelyn for this, the presentation and all of your work on renaming this trail. I, after I had been educated about the treatment of the native Californians by Junipero Serra, I had brought forth and was advocating to see if we could get a different name. And so we were, for the meantime, I had requested that we refer to it as the I-280 Trail. And thank you for everyone that, that moved over to that name for this time. And then we waited to see what the public suggested for, for a new name for the trail. And so I really appreciate that outreach. I understand that it wasn't, some, some people don't feel that it did not get as much as we might have. But I think there was a little bit of response fatigue from the housing element and the park and all of the things that we've been really working on having more outreach. And it, I think, over the holidays, people might have not picked up every bit of mail and responded to everything and might have been kind of tired. So the, the Tamian, traditionally, I'm going to just read from Wikipedia, that they traditionally lived throughout the Santa Clara Valley. The first use of the name Tamian is on record as early as 1777. It comes from the Aloni name for the location of the first mission Santa Clara on the Guadalupe River. Father Pina mentioned in a letter to Junipero Serra that the area around the mission was called Tamian by the native people. One of the reasons why I really like this name is because it's, to me, it's very poignant that it's sitting right alongside of the Junipero Serra Freeway. The I-280 is called the Junipero Serra Freeway, and the Tamian Inu Trail would be right alongside of it. And I, I just, like I said, I find it poignant that way. So I, I'm really pleased with the outcome of the survey, that this name was brought forward. I think it's really, it's very interesting that we're learning that, that the Tamian people, the Tamian Nation is, is the, they are the native people in this area. Most of us thought it was the Aloni. So I'm, I'm glad there's going to be an educational stop, and I hope that all of this, this history can be incorporated into it as well. So I'm, I'm fully behind this. I think it's, I'm really impressed with the choice. I really like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Any more comments? Councilmember Fu.
Yeah, no, I agree wholeheartedly with Councilmember Moore on this. I think that the Tamian Inu is a fantastic name for the trail. I appreciate the juxtaposition of it against the Junipero Serra Freeway. I think it's really important that we recognize the full history of Santa Clara Valley, and I think that the Tamian are underrepresented in that. So I think this is a marvelous opportunity to give them some representation. I also agree with the speakers who have mentioned the confusion surrounding the Cupertino Crossroads. That seems like a poor choice of name for a trail that, that would also invoke this as other commercial center in town. I also don't really think that it, as a trail that is mostly linear, that it, it really qualifies as crossroads. There's not really anything crossing it. It's just there. So I, I think that Tamian Inu is a fantastic choice, and I'll be happy to support it.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Yeah, I too like the name Tamian Inu. It recognizes the connection that the Tamian Nation has with our land and Cupertino specifically. So a great choice, and I agree with everything Councilmember Moore stated about the, the history and the, and the connection we have with Tamian Nation. So I'm, I'm good.
Councilmember Chow?
So I just want to, to see whether the other council members can, I mean, this trail, it hasn't been constructed. We likely won't have funding to construct it for another 10 years, maybe. It's nice to name it, but then we probably won't be able to have a sign to recognize it because it's costly. And we, and without funding, it's sky. But then if we can name like Lawrence Smithy Park, that's something attainable, we can open it. I like the name Tamian, and I am wondering whether something that we already have or will likely have soon, maybe better we can put a sign there with a history, why this area should be recognized as Tamian Nation. I wonder if the council should consider that. And then maybe for this trail, which needs funding, we could pursue potential donors who might help decide the naming. And but still, of course, subject to the council approval.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments?
I, I don't have a comment. So the, the survey is disappointing, but I like the history. And I do think, you know, once we name it, it comes with education and comes with awareness. This is very strict, you know, I, I don't know California history, so this is really good education part for me, too. I, I have no objection to it. So if, and if there's any no more comments from the council, may I have a motion?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 23-04-
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 23-040, approving the Tamian Inu as the officially recognized trail name for the I-280 trail.
Is there a second?
More seconds?
Councilmore seconds? Any more discussions? If not, let's vote by light.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now we're moving to number nine.
Mayor Way?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm sorry. So we are past 10:30, so we do need a motion if council wants to start a new item. I believe item 10 is time-sensitive. I'm not sure that anything else on the agenda is, but item 10, I think staff would recommend that council consider it tonight.
Okay. So can I have a motion to extend it to 11 o'clock, and then have move number 10 before number nine?
So moved.
Second?
Yes.
Okay, second by Vice Mayor Mohan, and let's vote by light.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. So we're moving to number 10. The number 10 is 2022 General Plan Annual Report and Housing Element Annual Progress Report Forms Required by HCD. The recommended action is to receive reports and authorize submission to the Department of Housing and Community Development. So do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, for extending the time and also moving the agenda to be heard. There is a time sensitivity. The report has to be submitted to HCD by April 1st.
Understood.
So we'll have a presentation prepared, and it will be presented by Carrie Husler, the Housing Manager. Go for it.
Good evening, Mayor Way and councilmembers. I am getting my presentation ready. My name is Carrie Husler, Housing Manager, and I am joined by Luke Connolly, our Acting Community Development Director. I am here tonight to present you with an overview of the city's 2022 General Plan Annual Report, and the city's progress in implementing our housing element in the 2022 Annual Housing Element Report. The general plan report was reviewed by Planning Commission on December 13th in 2022, and following this meeting, the housing report will be submitted to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, by the April 1st deadline. So the first few slides will talk about the general plan annual update. This is required by state law. There's two parts. There's progress on the general plan policies, and then there's the Housing Element APR, the Annual Progress Report, on forms from HCD. This was reviewed by Planning Commission in December. Planning Commission suggested adding policies with next comprehensive general plan update regarding telecommunication projects to meet 5G architectural standards, public health and safety environmental changes, and smart city initiatives. Next, we'll move on to talk about the 2022 Housing Element Annual Progress Report, the The 2022 report covers activity during January through December of 2022. Numbers are based on net new building permits issued, which adds housing to the RENA stock. In past years, the report focused on building permits issued for new housing units broken down by affordability level, the city's progress towards meeting its RENA numbers, and the city's progress towards implementing its housing element programs. The new report reflects changes to state legislation with significant reporting requirements. Here is an overview of the RENA generation by developers for the time period of 2014 to 2022. In the last nine years, developers have applied for and been issued the following building permits. Overall, in 2022, the city issued 128 building permits, of which we have 24 moderate income units, and 104 above moderate income units. You see that although we have made progress, there is quite a lot of housing that remains to be built. Here is an overview of the city's RENA entitlements for the same time period. In all four categories, we have far exceeded our RENA obligations. The city has entitled and produced 546 tonal units, as counted towards our annual housing element progress reports, otherwise known as our RENA production. The city has entitled 3,370 units, which have not yet been produced. I would like to point out that many of the moderate units are ADUs, accessory dwelling I thought it would be helpful to outline Table A and Table A2, which comprise the bulk of the data in the report. In Table A, the city reported four housing development applications at Marina Plaza, Allen Row, Canyon Crossing, and the McClellan subdivision. Please note, an application is a formal submission of a project for approval, either for a discretionary entitlement, or where a ministerial process is required, or the application for a building Table A2 provides detail on the annual building activity report summary. To highlight, in 2022, the city entitled 263 net new units. We issued building permits for 128 net new units, and we issued certificate of occupancy for 29 net new units. This concludes my presentation, and Luke and I are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember questions? Can we keep it at two minutes? I do have one question. So in 2022, the actual occupancy is 29 units.
We issued certificate of occupancy for 29 units, correct?
So that means actually 29 new units are being occupied. The rest are either in building, in being built, or just having permit, they haven't done anything, entitlement, but they haven't done anything, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I, my comment is that that sounds pretty low for 29 occupancy in 2022. Does that include ADU and everything?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, thank you. If the council had questions? Can you push your button? Councilmember Chow?
Okay, so could you show Table A again? That's a housing development application submitted, four of them. Are they all approved? I, my understanding is they are all approved, right?
Through the mayor, I believe that they're all approved.
Yes, if I could just clarify, those are all approved projects. They've received their development entitlements.
Yeah, so this is my, the screenshot I got. So these four projects are all approved. Then, I'm just curious, how come we only list as submitted and not approved? As if it's submitted in 2022, and we didn't approve them?
I believe through the mayor, so if I can make a clarification, CD, feel free to jump in. Table A, which is housing development application submitted, that is a category that HCD has asked us to report back.
Oh, so they did not ask us how many of those submitted were approved?
If I could answer, I think the reports actually now, especially the HCD report, is tracking development pretty much at every stage of the project. So projects that are unfiled, projects that have received their approval through planning, projects that are at the building permit stage, and then at the certificate of occupancy stage, which is the last stage where you can actually have people moving in. So they're really tracked throughout the life of the project. Something on the previous year's report, for instance, that was maybe at the planning stage, would show up at the next year at a building permit stage. So HCD has information.
So the report will include which ones are submitted and approved, and whether, which stage of that process it is?
That's correct, and each year, the reports are getting, as I'm saying, increasingly detailed, so that the state can track what stage the projects are at.
And another point of clarification, so we only point out these four projects, so we do not provide a name of the project to HCD as part of the middle. All HCD cares about is the number of units that have met the requirement, but we simply want to provide the name of these development to council, as they probably are more, you're more familiar with the name of development.
Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you. So I'm looking at the staff report on page three, Table Two. I don't know if someone could bring that up, if that's possible. Where I'm confused is that I'm seeing the Oaks, and it says BP, that would be the building permit under review, and it says above moderate, 123 units. I'm wondering if maybe I'm missing something here, because there's, you have 131 senior apartments, 48 BMR units for seniors. I know the 27 memory care rooms don't count, and then you also have the 88 townhouses and row houses, so should that be in this table? I don't, I just, I'm kind of lost when I look at the Oaks, and it says 123. Is that, does that need to be changed?
We can look into that further. It won't impact the data submitted on the report, but we can clarify.
123. Did you change it and end?
No, no, we've got, I mean, I've pulled up the page, and I was on the Planning Commission. We've got, yeah, so it's 131 senior apartments will be in the Atrea Building, and you've got the 48 senior BMRs, that building's almost, almost done there, and the 88 townhouses and row houses. Yeah, so I think that just, and it's got the old name, the Oaks, so maybe that is just a relic of an earlier table that could use some more. But this is not, like you're saying, this is not what's getting turned into HCD. You've got another, yeah, place where you're keeping track of it, but I think for this summation table, it will probably help. And I think people are looking forward to those buildings getting completed. I think that the BMR looks like it's moving along pretty well. So on that note, I'd love to hear an update on when they expect those to open. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fu?
Sure. So of the 546 homes that are in the total production for the period from the very beginning of the fifth RENA cycle to now, how many are ADUs?
Sure, let me go to the RENA generation by developers. So of the 546, I believe that the moderate income category is comprised of mostly ADUs, 158.
Okay, that sounds about right. I had asked staff for, like, by year figures, and it totaled up to roughly that number. That's about, almost a third of all of our production, is 29%. ADUs under 800 square feet are entitled to a ministerial approval process. Do you know how many applicants utilized that ministerial process?
I would have to look into that further.
Yeah, we would have to get back to see what came in under the ministerial process. I don't know the exact number. I knew for the period, we were around 160 ADUs. We were running about 20 a year, which has now increased recently, but we would have to get back to you on the ministerial aspect.
Would you assume that it's the majority of them?
By far and away.
Okay, right, that's most of what I was looking for. No, that's good to know. I think that is probably all that I have here. Thank you for the report.
If there are no more questions, let us open up to public comments, please. Do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have one blue speaker card in Community Hall, and I see one raised hand on Zoom.
Thank you.
Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, City Council. I have lived the drama of the sixth cycle RENA for the last year, and I will tell you, I was exhausted in December. That's probably why I didn't take the Tamian Trail, whatever that was, in January, because I was exhausted in December. But yet, HCD made us turn this document in, take our holidays to keep working on this. And I can tell you right now, HCD just told Los Altos Hills two days ago that they did not certify. And there has been builder's remedies that have been put in two weeks ago in Los Altos Hills by Foothill College in a fire danger zone. Last summer, that area was under wildfire evacuation. We have no assurance that HCD will certify us. I have been extremely critical of this whole process since the beginning. I won't go down that road. I am following the seventh cycle RENA housing numbers. It is happening in Southern California and up here. There will not be a repeat of what happened this last time. I am very, very concerned that HC, and HCD just eliminated self-certification by cities. This just happened like two, two days ago. HCD is making up the rules as we go along. It's not fair, it's not ethical, it's not legal, and I have grave concerns about the legality of what is being foisted upon our state. All 480 cities and the counties are having to run the hamster treadmill that HCD is pursuing. And yes, okay, someone said that HCD does not care about each development, they do. People are blabbing to HCD about every single building project in the state. And there's SB 450, which I guess that Tony Atkins just put in a day ago, which is going to allow SB 9 to have even more ministerial ADUs, and HCD will take over ADU implementation in every city that is not running the hamster wheel. I can tell you right now, this is happening in other states. It's happening in Arizona, Oregon, Virginia, Florida, Washington State, and I have grave concerns about the legality of all of this. That is why I look back, and we are fighting the American Revolution again. Yeah, the audience, the high school kids laughed at me two weeks ago, but they don't know, they're not adults, they're not the ones that are sacrificing their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and we will move to Zoom. Jennifer Sheeran, has her hand raised? Welcome, Jennifer.
Yes, I saw you unmuted yourself, Jennifer. Good evening, again, Mayor Way and City Councilmembers. I'm speaking tonight only as a resident, and not as a commissioner. This progress report is fairly depressing. It highlights the significant underbuilding of the housing in our community over the past eight years. Only about 500 units, housing units have been built here in total, and only about 12% of those were for low and very low-income residents. Who qualifies for low-income housing? It might surprise many. For a family of four, I did a little investigation, low income is about $131,000 here in Cupertino. The starting salaries for teachers are about $77-ish thousand, which means they qualify even for a single person living alone. We need to make sure our housing element, that we're redoing, considers everyone in our, and not just those residents that already own a single-family home. I hope that we work to fix our housing element, and that this time, there's input from residents, students, 20 and 30-year-olds newly in the workforce, those with lower incomes, and others wishing to live here, that they will be truly incorporated in the plan. We also need to be sure that the projects will actually get built. Approving something isn't enough. We can't bank on projects that have been approved for a while without any progress. Thank you for considering this input and your work on behalf of Cupertino. Thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer. And Mayor, that was our final.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Again, thanks for the public comments. I'm going to close the public comments and go back to the council for deliberation. I'd like to make a motion first, and have a second, and then we can deliberate. I move that we receive reports and authorize submission to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Second.
Second by Councilmember. Second by Councilmember Fu. Okay, now discussions, please.
Yeah. I, um, I think, following up on Councilmember Moore's question regarding, I think I looked up the website for Westport. 137, it listed in the staff report is 137 units. But the 137, I mean, 123, 123 is the number of assisted unit. And that website unfortunately has not been updated since December 2021. We have approved the amendment for the assisted living. And then the project consists of 88 townhouses and row houses and 48 below market rate that's in the building two. And that's already one, I'm not very good at this, 136, I think. And then, so it should be 167, somewhere around that. I mean, 267 or somewhere around that, even if the assisted living is adjusted, then it could be like 265 or something. So, and then the table in the staff report lists only above moderate for the Oaks. Something doesn't look right.
Yeah, if I could clarify, as Councilmember Moore had pointed out, that the number in the table on page three, table two, that understates what was entitled for the Westport project. I believe it was subsequently modified from 267 to 258. But it's about 258 total units. So the, the table here is not stating the full development entitlement.
And also below market rate, it's not listed, right?
Correct, and that would partially account for why it's understating the units.
In the report is accurate, it's just this table.
Correct, the table in the staff report.
And can we get the updated table later?
We can certainly do that and update the website to get the correct unit count.
And we will double check table A before submittal to HCD to make sure we captured Westport correctly.
Through the mayor? Through the mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I pulled up table A just to, to double check it. And it is showing the 123 on PDF 407 of 428. It's the third line down. But it may be that things are split somehow. And that caused the error. So let's take a, if we could pull this up and take a look at it, because what I'm seeing is multiple lines showing Westport. And it could be that there's a grand total, perhaps. I'm not really sure how you're doing this, this part of the table, because I'm seeing one, two, three, eight, looks like nine lines for Westport. You've got moderate income deed restricted showing 36. Anyway, so if somebody could, could clarify this, I don't think I've dug into the extreme detail of, of table A before on this one.
Sorry, is the mic on? Sorry, I just need to get closer. Hi, good evening, Ben Foo, Director of Community Element. I just, I can answer the question about the table two, the 123 number. At least the number, that number references the number of permits not yet issued. So, so the Westport project has a number of different units, as you mentioned, different unit types. So 123 is correct, it's referenced the ones that actually not yet been issued, but approved. Just want to clarify at that point, but we'll look into the other points that you, you just presented.
Okay, so when I go to table A, it's got the total proposed units by project. And I think this is something that it might be that the, the table is kind of, it's not really showing a summation at the bottom and it just moves on to the next project, so we can't tell if the math is good. You got, got to assume that. And then what's a little confusing is that we've, it looks like it's broken up by parcels somehow and doesn't really make a lot of sense to me.
Through the mayor, if I may, Councilmember Moore, I believe it's because the project has been built in phases. So I've been told that some of the building permits were reported in 2021. So what's in this table, 123 units were building permits issued in 2022, and that's the confusion.
Okay, and there, but when you go to table A, and I think if someone will show this to me offline and just take a screenshot and point to how these numbers are adding up, because they've got 123 and then a bunch of other, other numbers here.
We'll clarify what was issued when, and then that might provide a more comprehensive understanding, given that the project was built in phases. And I think different phase was reported different year.
Okay, and I think this is also part of what Luke's saying, that they've changed how they want to have things reported where there's this extra layer of information. They're wanting to have it all the way down to where it is in the process. So I, I want to thank the planning commission for going through all of this again. I've, I've done it before. It's, it's a lot of work. And this, this new table, I had, I didn't catch that they had changed the way that is getting reported. So hats off to you for being able to figure it out. Thank you.
And point of clarification, so this report will go to Planning Commission after as a reference. We were trying to meet the April 1 deadline, so the report came to City Council directly.
It has not, pardon, through the mayor, it has not, so there is some sort of government code where it has to go to the Planning Commission?
Not necessarily. So the report will have to be presented to City Council. We will provide an informational update to Planning Commission in April.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I, I do believe that for the new report, because it's in phases, you have to report different phases of different units. So I'm going to trust the staff, going to double check the numbers, make sure it's correct. Thank you.
So I brought up the issue with the city manager that this should have gone to Planning Commission and then maybe these numbers could be checked. I understand that there is no time this year. I think the city manager promised for next year, we will plan ahead, so there is sufficient time to go to Planning Commission.
Yes, through the mayor, we're committed to bring it to Planning Commission first next year and then come to council.
Thank you very much for your effort.
If there's no more discussions, we have a motion in a second. May we vote by light, please?
Motion carries with more abstaining.
Sam, we are at 11 o'clock. Then we are, we do have one more item. Does the council want to go over it really fast or we want to wait, push it to the next meeting?
Maybe we should consider the consent agenda, which is the contract. Is that, does that need to be considered?
So, so we've been informed by Public Works that, that, that item five could be considered at the next meeting without creating any issues.
If the council can finish really fast on number nine, I would love to have it done because the California Cities Association Peninsula Division is going to have a meeting very soon and they are going to ask us to support it, oppose it. But if it's going to take some time, we can postpone to next meeting. That's the council's pleasure.
I'd be happy to continue deliberation.
So for another 15 minutes, 11:15? Okay. Oh, do we have a second? I'll second it. Can we vote by light? So this number eight is.
Pardon me, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mayor, you need to vote still.
Sorry.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, let's consider submitting a letter in opposition, opposed opposition to the Taxpayers Protection and Government Accountability Act, Initiative Number 21-0042A. So approve the submission of a letter to in opposition to the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. Do we have staff report on this?
I, I'll give a brief oral report. So this is, this is an initiative that's on the November 2024 ballot. It was opposed by the, the city through the Legislative Review Committee before it qualified for the ballot. It has a number of, of things that are potentially concerning for the city. It would prohibit advisory measures that would express a preference for the use of revenues from a general tax. It would also require all local tax measures to be approved by a two-thirds vote, as approved to a majority vote for some measures under current law. And it would raise the burden of proof to impose fees and charges on, to fund city operations. So staff is recommending that the city submit a letter in opposition to the measure, which has been requested by the, the League of Cities, because there, you know, the, the, the measure would place further restrictions on the ability of, of local governments to raise revenue and there's legal risk that's created by the higher standard for the review of fees and charges. So with that, I will be available for any questions and that, that council may have.
So Chris, so our Legislative Review Committee last year, because I remember, I think in the staff report, Darcy, Mayor Darcy Paul did send a letter of opposition before this even qualified as a, as a measure.
He, he did send a letter, I believe it was to Senator Cortese, and this letter is being requested by the, the League of Cities.
Right, I, I think he sent it to Dave Cortese and Evan Low and a couple other. And then at that time, I believe Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Chow were on the Legislative Committee. So you guys have probably have reviewed this already. So I have no more questions. That's just my question to clarify that. I think our council did oppose it last year already. So if there's no questions, I want to open up public comment. Do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have one blue speaker card from Jennifer Griffin.
And anybody on Zoom?
And there is one raised hand on Zoom.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. This is one of the reasons why we should not have gotten rid of the Legislative Review Committee. It was extremely enlightening to me. I feel now, because we don't have it, the public has no way of knowing slick things like this where they're trying to take away and confuse the public just because the Legislative Review Committee last year sent a letter. We need to send another one again. I read this and I feel like the public is being fleeced. I have grave concerns about Evan Low and Senator Cortese, where their loyalties lie. I did not vote for either of them and I probably will not vote for them again. I have great respect for them. But I have been forced, because I have no Legislative Review Committee in my city, to go out and join other groups that are looking at what the laws will do to this state. And I can tell you, I read this item here and I have a lot of concerns about it. I am not willing to give up my personal liberty and my city to someone who at the state level is going to dictate and think that they know best about what happens in my city. I am not going to surrender my liberty for my city. And this is how it begins. They start taking away the liberties from the city and they don't let the public know what happens. This is what's happening. That's why I hope that we will see fit to restore the Legislative Review Committee so that the public can understand what is happening to them. Yes, I will harp again about the Revolutionary War. If my ancestors had sat there and let someone take advantage of them, the taxation or whatever caused the Revolutionary War and caused those 13 colonies to pull together, we would still be sitting there in a cesspool of taxes. I, I'm sorry, I cannot begin to state that things like this cannot be, you cannot hold the public, whatever is happening at the state level, they're treating the cities like they're stupid, like we're vassals. Well, I'm sorry, you know, if my city council is not going to support and give the public the information they need, they're going to have to go to other groups. And that's what I have had to do. I, I really, really have grave concerns. I don't fully understand what this is doing. But if Mayor Darcy and the Legislative Review Committee saw fit last year to say that this was not a good piece of legislation, then I'm on board with them. Let's do it again and again and again. You know, if you don't do it here, we'll do it by the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and we will move to Zoom. And our speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. A few things concern me about this item. The text of the initiative has not been included as an attachment. I think it should have been. Also, there's no link to where we can find the actual final text. When you do a Google, you're not sure what you're getting sometimes. The draft letter, this is a question for the city attorney. The draft letter says, it's deceptively titled. Why? What makes it so? I'm not clear how it would affect Cupertino directly. I read some of the aspects and from a resident who's retired and on a fixed income, some of those things are appealing to me. But I don't know what the consequences are of all the property taxes staying local. It sounds kind of good, but what's the consequence? I don't see any pros and cons and I'm concerned that because we don't have a legislative review anymore, that the next item that comes up will have even less scrutiny. So if you could answer why it's deceptive, what are some exact specific things that are bad for Cupertino? But, and bad for residents, not just the city, but the residents. And should this, the council take a position on a ballot measure that citizens are going to vote on? Should you have a policy? I know you've taken positions on state bills, but that's not the same as a ballot measure. So, and, and do you need a procedure? When you do and when you don't? Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And Mayor, that is all for public comment.
Okay, thank you. Let's bring back to the council. We have about five minutes, so can we limit to one minute, please? I, I, I'm going to say first, because even if we don't have a Legislative Committee, this shows that we are working, we are working with the League of Cal Cities. We're looking with, with our Peninsula Division. We're working with the Cities Association of Santa Clara. All the cities are together. And I think the attorney can answer the questions of the consequences for the city and for the residents, because we bear the burden of having to prove a lot of things and we are, have a legal risk of a lot of. If this bill passes, all the cities are in a pretty tight position. Can you explain a little bit more?
Yeah, just briefly. So, so I mean, one consequence is it would, would make it more difficult for the city to, to raise revenue. That, that's, that's a policy decision that council could make because, you know, as, as the, the member of the public commented, you know, some people prefer to have more restrictions on the government's ability to raise taxes. So, so that's, that's, that's a policy question for the council. The, the legal question that I see that does increase legal risk to the city is that there would be a higher standard of review for certain, for, for certain fees and charges imposed for, for city services and, and, and other things. And so that, 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 that would expose those, those, those fees and charges to, to greater potential for legal challenge and potential loss of revenue through that, through, through that means. The, 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 the other thing to keep in mind is that the, the initiative would limit voters' ability to, to, to vote on certain advisory measures that are not binding on the council but express voter preference for the use of, 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 of funds from, from general taxes. So except, for example, you know, you could impose a general tax, but the voters could advise council. but the voters could advise council that they wish those funds to be set aside for, you know, homeless services, for example, is one that I've seen in other jurisdictions. So those are the principal effects. It is ultimately a judgment call for council as to, you know, to whether it takes a position on the issue. The League of Cities has asked for the city to take a position and I think that reflects the League of Cities' general control about the impact of the revenue on, revenue loss on cities and then some of the other burdens that it places on local governments.
Thank you, City Attorney Jensen. From the council members, comments? No comments? May I have a motion, please, if there's no comment?
I have a question. So could you give some examples of the tax measures the city might have that will be impacted by this?
Yes, so it would, so as general rule, general taxes are now, the local governments can now be approved by a majority vote. So anything, so anything that's a general tax that can be spent for any general fund purpose and is not a property tax can be approved by a majority vote.
Before, it's two-thirds vote.
Right, this would change that to two-thirds. So that would, it would increase.
I thought the general tax was two-thirds. It was changed to fifth, simple majority now?
General taxes, simple majority, special taxes and property taxes are two-thirds.
Oh, so right now, okay. So this will be, and that's in case the city will put on. Let's say we increase the sales tax by 1%.
For example, yes.
That will be impacted by this. And it will increase the transparency disclosure requirement, which might be a good thing, right?
So it's really up to council as whether that's a good thing or not.
I'm concerned about the limit on the advisory major. I think that should not be limited. And, but my concern with this agenda is we have only a letter from the League of Cities. Is there any analysis from an independent source? Or any letter from the proponent of the major, so we can see both sides?
So first, you know, there was a version of the staff report that had a link to the initiative and I'm not sure how that dropped out of the final report, so I apologize that that wasn't provided. I'm not, I thought, I provided the League of Cities summary because I thought that was a good digestible summary. I think it's pretty, actually pretty hard to find an impartial analysis of this measure at this time because pretty much everybody that's talking about it has an agenda. But certainly, you know, if council were uncomfortable with the information that's provided, I could bring back more information.
So when it's put on the ballot, the Attorney General will provide more of an impartial analysis?
There is an impartial summary from the Attorney General. I think that what's been provided in the staff report is more helpful for council than that impartial summary would be.
And also, when it's on the ballot, there will be arguments for and against, so the voters can view both sides of the argument.
That's correct.
Yeah. I think taking a position on state bills makes sense that because there's legislators who are voting on it, so we are writing to the legislator. I know that we took a position on this earlier, but I'm having second thought. This is a major the public, the voters are going to vote on. I appreciate that the mayor bring this to the council because I remember in 2020, the Peninsula Division took a position on a ballot major. I was not happy about, they didn't consult us.
Do we need to extend it again? It's to 11:15 already?
Yeah, unless you're prepared to vote, I think.
Okay. More concerned are the consequences for the city, the liabilities of lawsuits of when we do our scheduling. So this measure, to me, I have no doubt that we need to oppose it. So we have a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? Can we vote by light?
I'm sorry, I missed the motion and the second.
We have a motion and a second and we said we're ready to vote, right?
Do we have a motion?
I thought I made a motion for discussion issues. Did I not?
I recall that, I believe the mayor made a motion that was seconded by Councilmember Froom.
Okay, so I made a motion as recommended to oppose. And do I have a second?
So, Mayor?
I moved in second and discussions. Go ahead. But we need to really extend it if you want to discuss.
I understand this probably is a major that could put city in a more restrictive position, but I feel like just reading one side of the story, I'm not sure I have enough information to really make a decision on exactly what kind of restriction is that restriction really something that increase the transparency? I think increasing transparency is a good thing when especially we are going to take money out of people's pocket. But I need to understand more to decide, so I will abstain from this.
We haven't voted yet. Okay, so we're still in the discussion. So I guess if we're ready to vote, we can do that. There is abstain.
Yeah, I just have a very quick comment. I think that this is really something that we ought to be vigorously opposing. It overthrows a number of important California precedents in terms of how we interpret what is a tax and what is a fee. It also does the same for, you know, the voter-initiated initiative process for how we handle taxes. To give you some idea of how artfully they've crafted the marketing title for this, the description on the Secretary of State's website is, in terms of what it will do, is that it limits the ability of voters in state and local governments to raise revenues for government services. That's the only description. And it is a much more accurate description of what's happening.
Okay, so can we vote?
So could-
All right.
How exactly it redefines fees?
Point of order, I think we need a vote to extend the time of the meeting if we're going to continue discussion.
I move, we extend another 10 minutes. Can I have a second? Please vote by light.
Vice Mayor, please vote with your light.
Yeah.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now, do we have a motion? We have a second. Please limit your comment to two minutes.
So how does it change the definition of fees and services?
Is that a question from me or for the city attorney?
I think the city attorney was trying to answer.
So, I don't, I'm not, so that is, I'm not super familiar with that provision, but it does, but it does change the definition of franchise fees from fees to taxes, which has, you know, has the potential to limit the ability of cities to impose those fees. And, you know, so that's the main issue that I'm aware of.
So would that affect things like development impact fees?
That wouldn't directly affect development impact fees. It would potentially change the standard of review for those type of fees. Although probably not impact fees, more of regular charges, regulatory charges and service fees.
Like the park use, the facility use fees?
Think of like sewer fees and those type of fees.
Those type of fees, already there are regulations to regulate them.
There are. They would be stricter under this measure.
And you think the restriction will, is hard for the city to comply with?
Well, I think if this were to pass, we would work to comply with it. It will take, it will effectively take more analysis and evidence gathering and more reliance on, you know, consultants and other ways to justify our fees if this were to pass.
But that will give the public, the voting public more information on the fees we are charging?
That may be one side effect. I think that the larger impact will be, you know, increased difficulty in raising fees and more legal vulnerability to those fees.
So, yeah, so if I understand correctly, part of it is the proof of burden is on the city. Because you have to justify how you charge it to be exactly the cost and it could be challenged by anybody. So it proves the burden on the city is so huge that the Cities Association is asking all the cities to oppose it. Because you have to prove it and then you have to hire consultants, analysis, and people can still challenge you.
The proof of burden is on the city now for any major that we propose?
So specifically with respect to fee and charge, a fee or a charge, it would increase the burden of proof from, you know, a preponderance of an evidence to clear and convincing evidence, which is a high standard to meet. So, for example, you know, that's the same standard that you need to sort of impose punitive damages in a civil case, just to take one example of where that shows up in the law. And so it's definitely a high standard, a higher standard to meet. I think that, you know, the consequences of that would be unpredictable, but I think they would be concerning from a legal standpoint.
Okay.
Okay.
No more questions. Can we vote? Oh, Councilmember Moore, you have a question?
No, I was just, I was actually looking at what I believe was the city of Brea had put out for some information. This vote isn't going to happen until November of 2024. I would prefer that we would, at this time, be looking at some of the legislation that's going through this year that's going to get signed because there's so much time between now and the actual vote. So I am wondering, what is our rush to look at this particular piece of this ballot initiative as opposed to looking at some of the other laws that we know that are going to be modifying things that are affecting our city directly?
So I think I can answer that because the League of Cities, Peninsula Divisions, and also the Santa Clara County, Santa Clara Cities Association is asking cities to look at it, to do an early opposition.
Yeah, this is the league. I mean, I had the same question myself when this request came in because November 2024 seemed a long way away to me as well. And, you know, the response was, you know, I think both at the state level and then our regional organizations are attempting to gather support for the campaign to oppose the measure. And so they're trying to line up support now. So that's the reason for the timing.
I think we're ready to vote.
The motion carries with Chow abstaining.
Thank you, and meeting is adjourned.
Wait, did you want to?
We're going to have a happy note.
So, video, we have a video to show. This is a recap of the intergenerational mixer that happened last, on Monday, and also a recap of the Regnar Creek ribbon cutting. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, City Manager. We're always going to end our meeting in a happy note.
Thank you, Mayor.